Call this meeting to order Okone County Council's special meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. We will move forward to the second reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance 2020-18, ordinance to amend ordinance 2020-01 for the budget for Okone County and to provide for the levy of taxes for ordinary county purposes, for the tri-county tech, technical college, special revenue fund for the emergency services protection special revenue fund, for the road maintenance special revenue fund, for the bridge and culvert capital project revenue fund, project fund, for the economic development capital project fund, for the debt service fund, for the victim services special revenue fund, for the capital vehicle equipment fund, all in Okone County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. Do I motion to approve?
Number two.
I have a motion by Mr. Elliott, second by Mr. Kane. Just for helping up for discussion, Ms. Brock, if you'll go over some budgetary amendments that we have in here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that the public hears this. There is no tax increase that we're talking about tonight, no mileage increase.
Correct.
So that's the headlines.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you are correct on that, and that is the headline. The county's operation will maintain at a 63.9 mils for county government operations, which is the current year and the previous year at that matter. And the mil estimate used in the calculations for the documents presented to you this evening is 552,000, which you'll hear from the auditor next week. The auditor and I have met on a bi-weekly basis to go over these numbers. I am 100% confident in what I am presenting is attainable without any tax increase to the citizens, and we are operating at current mileage. Now with that said, each of you should have a document in front of you that looks similar just like this. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And if y'all wouldn't mind, for the benefit of you all and the public, just go over these. I'll go slowly, but I also am not going to read to you because I know that you all can. We'll just do them department by department, and I'll do a brief explanation of what each of the increase request is for, how it made its way to this table, and what process we went through to prioritize the previous request that we've cut down from 4.8 to the 2.42 in front of you. We'll begin with the sheriff's office. So Sheriff Crenshaw is here, and if y'all have any questions for him, I'm sure he might be answering these for you. So in the years past, and we've discussed this before, with the number of deputies that we have on staff and the turnover that we had previous to our recent enormous and generous efforts to try to maintain our employees without an enormous turnover, we had built-in salary savings for the savings that would be captured throughout the year during the vacancies that occurred that had been underfunded for the past two fiscal years. We are putting that $150,000 back in because we are reaching a more stable workforce for the deputies. For the professional services, this is for services that were required by the sheriff's department outside agencies. And forensic stuff, am I correct there, Sheriff? Thank you. Data processing, obviously, is a record-keeping. Staff development is training. Small equipment is anything ranging from desktop calculators to telephones to any of the incidentals that may be required there. And their IT replacement, of course, is related to computer software upgrades. Now, the vest, Mr. McCall, this one was where you were interested as well as the software. So the cell phone software that we had discussed in a previous law enforcement committee meeting is included in this request, and the bulletproof vest for the SWAT team is also included in this request. Additional savings were found working with emergency services personnel and sheriff's office for the combination of the special dive team, as you all approved a few months ago, weeks ago, month 2020 is a time warp for me, I'm sorry. So the additional savings from those, the requirements for the dive team will be transferred over for the purchase of the vest that will be expiring. Moving on to the coroner, the maintenance on equipment is simply that, there's new equipment. I'm sorry.
Can I ask the sheriff something?
Absolutely. Sheriff?
I just want to clarify something.
They're in the ceiling, but we just want to make sure.
Mr. Stone?
Testing one, two. Everybody hear me?
Mike, this, this is the, this includes for the very best vest for our guys, right?
Yes, sir. Now, we were actually, it's a little bit more than 50, so we may have to transfer, Ms. Brock and I talked this morning, we may have to move some of these line items around, just some transfers through her, but, but it is.
It's very, so guys, when they, they're not being danger, when they get hit, they're going to be all right?
These are the very best SWAT vests that we, we can buy. So, I mean, we want them in the, in the very best. I don't know that, I don't know that there is a lesser grade in these type of vests, but, but it will be for the SWAT vest for the SWAT team.
This, this includes the Cadillac telephone?
That's correct. Again, we'll have to move some money around. That, it's Cell Bright is the name of that company. It's kind of the new, it's the fingerprint of the 21st century when it comes to evidence. Everybody's got cell phones, you know, when crimes are committed, we're able to get those cell phones and lots of time get, get evidentiary evidence off of a cellphone. So, you know, some of these phones, we can't, we can't extract that information from them, and this piece of equipment will allow us to do that. It's about $29,000, and then there's a recurring $6,000-plus dollars a year to maintain that, that contract with, with this company, so.
So this, what we're talking about tonight, this is everything you need for the protection of your people and the equipment and the, what you need to fight, fight these people.
That's correct. We do believe that, you know, there's salary savings by putting that back in, getting underfunded in salary in years past, that we'll be able to transfer some of those funds into another line item and take care of the needs that we've got at this immediate time. Yes, sir.
So you, Mike, you're absolutely comfortable?
I am.
Okay. That's fine, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the interruption.
No, no, I'm sorry, didn't recognize that you had a question. So to recap, the sheriff's office, the total request for the budget amendment is $258,000. Moving on to the coroner's office, this is maintenance on equipment. As you all know, we constructed the new coroner's office three and a half years ago. The equipment maintenance was covered under a contractor in that time, and of course, there's some upgrades that need to be done to his equipment there. The $8,000 is actually not an increase, that's a net zero, as you'll see down on the lower part of the page, second one from the bottom up. So what we're doing is taking the money that we had designated for the Department of Social Services and moving it to the coroner's office, as the coroner works directly with the funeral homes now since state law has recently changed on pauper funerals. Pauper funerals are those where either the body or decedent is unclaimed, or the family does not have the means to do a proper burial or cremation of their loved one. And the total request for the coroner's office is $8,750. The detention center also under the auspice of the sheriff's control, desperately needs this correctional officer. We have had inmates more than normal overtime in the past three to four months. If we look at the overtime and the need for this additional position, we'll see that as this additional position gets trained and gets into rotation on a normal shift, that overtime should come down some and create the balance. The detention center has been understaffed since we built it in 2016 or 15? And this is one of those things where we're just going to have to add a position as we can, just like we, you know, we have that agreement to where we need to add a position in the sheriff's office per year just to keep up with the demand of the activities that happen inside the detention center. Again, removing that salary savings because the revolving door has slowed it down enough to the point where we're keeping the positions longer now and that we need to close that gap in what we estimated the length of time for a vacancy would be. Again, the data processing is just software stuff. And the medical state contract for the, medical contract for, for the state inmates, as you all know, you approved the medical contract for medical services for inmates at the detention center, both county and state sentenced. That contract had gone up this year, obviously, the medical needs of those in prison or in jail are our responsibility, and, and that's one of those, we just don't have a whole, a whole lot of choice in that one. The total request for the detention center is $267,845. For emergency services and.
Brock.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Just a statement on there from anybody that's ever, whether they've ever been a boss or been over, over people, if you look at what this council is attempting to do with, with salaries, it is a lot less expensive to keep good people working for us and pay them the right wages than it is to turn over and over and over. And, and I know several, all, all of us up here can sit there and say that, that it's a lot easier to keep the good people we have working for us and pay them right. That is the best thing for tax, taxpayers.
It is. It's the most efficient means of maintaining county operations as well.
I think when people, when they see that, the turnover that we've had in several different areas, we have, this council has continued to focus on that and look at those turnover areas and try to get those salaries up to maintain that. Because I don't know what it takes, I know what it takes in the police world to get trained, but even in, you know, jobs that some people consider simple, it takes several months for people to get up to date. So I just wanted to touch on that, that I'm very appreciative of this council and as administration working towards that, on getting these salaries up to keep our people here.
Thank you, sir. For Department 107, which is for fire and emergency services, the 800,000 is the balance for the 1.3 million dollars we've all previously discussed. This was for the lease on this, the lease purchase for the six fire trucks that we ordered earlier in the year. We knew that balance had been deferred when we asked to adopt the current year budget until we reached the point where we would know a little more about where we're going. Now that we do know where we're going, we need to put that funding back in. And as per our budget discussion on April 11th, Okone County for the past 16 years has paid Okone Memorial, Okone, what was it before Okone Memorial? No, it was Okone Memorial and then one, and now we're Prisma. Essentially, we've paid $150,000 a year flat fee for ambulance services to the citizens of Okone County, and that fee has to increase because ambulance services in Okone County are obviously a vital and responsible resource of government funds. The total requested amount for fire and emergency services is $950,000, which you'll see is part of the bulk of what the request is for the budget amendment here. For High Falls County Park, we have reduced the equipment rental because the product, the piece of equipment that we were renting at the time is no longer needed, and increased electricity because, as you've all noticed, all of our parks are full every single weekend. Therefore, we are using a little more electricity on the park side. The total request for High Falls Park is negative $5,000. South Cove County Park recently upgraded all of its electrical lines because of some issues that we had had in years past. As you all know, and you've all been to our parks, we have not upgraded our parks adequately over the 20 years. There was a period of probably 22, 23 years where we just kind of put a Band-Aid on things here and there, put a Band-Aid on things here and there. And as Okone County has gained in popularity of South Carolina's freshwater coast, we're packed every single weekend. And because we're packed, we can't pick up a camper and move it over when that electrical component goes out. So last year, you know that we expended the ATAC funds and the park upgrades and have created efficiencies in installing new LED lighting throughout the parks, but because of the number of camping and truck fishing tournaments and the extra lighting required for safety because we're open year-round and consistently full, there is an increase of $20,000 in the line item request for that for South Cove County Park. And, and just of note, last year, we had 15,000, 14,000, some odd, $500 in that line item, and it was approximately $3,000 over, so this is not a wag, it's a pretty close to estimated. And being that we entered this year into COVID, you know, the, the budget year began on July 1st, we lost 10 days in June after we did a slow reopening, and Phil announced this last week at the Shawram grand opening for the building there. We lost two weeks of activity in June, but still finished the month more than double of the month of the previous year. So if that doesn't tell you that our parks are a great hit right now, nothing will. The next item down is Department 301, which is the assessor's office. We are rolling out some new software for mapping. This $21,000 increase request is in combination with the GIS office, but it was easier for us to put it in one department and make one department pay for it, but it's a shared software upgrade program between the assessor and the GIS, and it's specific to mapping. For the auditor's office, the auditor currently has a part-time employee on staff, and converting that position from part-time to full-time will obviously help the auditor maintain the staffing levels that she needs to provide the services to the county residents. And a major change happened in this last fiscal year that we are dealing with in this current fiscal year, is the fact that boats and motors have now gone monthly and not annually like cars. So it's something that we've gone on, we'll go a three-month or four-month period without seeing the revenue come back in from that, but it will make itself back up at the first part of next year. The delinquent tax office, because we had a new delinquent tax office staff, we had made a correction in the salary line item for that. It was underfunded, and that's just a corrective measure for that one. And the total request for the budget amendment change there is $3,900. The treasurer's office, three quarters down the page, postage, obviously, as we get more residents and businesses in and around the cities and in Okone County, we are going to need to mail out tax notices to those and change of tax form notice. And the printer cartridges, the cost for printing, obviously, is going to go up with the number of things that we're printing increasing. That request total is $6,000. As I noted earlier, the Department of Social Services, this is simply a transfer from one department to another, so that is a net zero for you. Okay, for the, for the help department, sorry, for one second, I thought that was help department building, so we just had a meeting on that earlier. For Department 403, which is the second from the bottom, the decrease in funding to leave for Wahala Building Funds will roll as approved by council. The decrease in funds is simply that we have overfunded them in the past. We looked through what was budgeted, what was spent, what was budgeted, what was spent for a period of five years, and it was overfunded in the past, and I felt for financial transparency, we was just cleaned the books up there, so that is a net negative $8,000. The last one on the first page here is the Office of Veterans Affairs, and the increase in operational is the fact that we are providing more online and paper services to the veterans in Okone County. Therefore, they will need more office supplies to do so. There are times when we actually fill out the forms for the veterans by hand, mail them to the veterans, have the veterans mail them back to us to send to the South Carolina VA or to the USVA to provide that assistance. They just need a little bit of extra money, as we are not providing the in-service opportunities for service to our veterans as we have in the past, and I want to make sure that nothing is cut short there providing veterans our services. Small equipment, again, goes from anything, from a desktop calculator to a telephone wire. And staff development, there were some online training opportunities passed that had been free, but after looking at the criteria for some of the ones that were 100, 125 bucks for the online classes, we felt it would be worth it for our staff to learn some of the changes that we are facing in, in serving our veterans in light of COVID-19 moving forward. And the total request for the Veterans Affairs Office is $2,250. We'll move on to page two. Thank you, Katie. So roads and bridges, this is one of those offices where employees have been cut, shifted around, moved. We did ask for an employee earlier in this year and received it, so that does not reflect it in your budget because it had already been funded by your approval in April. Operational, again, just basic office equipment, standardized things that you would need to run and operate a road department smoothly. That request is $2,500. Economic development is a savings of $58,647 because the position for the graphic designer, I believe, has been merged with a marketing position in that office, and we decided to move the destination Okone representative title out of that office entirely. That results in a negative $58,647, and that does include the removal of the benefits as well for that. That was not just a salary number for that one. Information technology, you all know, it's been one year, one month, and 18 days since our cyber attack, and our IT office has done incredible things in that shorter period of time, and you've all known this since you have your email upgraded. What we've gone through in the past 18 months to increase security, continue to increase security, as I told you all in an email a while back, we do have a fraud service that we're working on. IT has helped to implement that and get us going. Not quite ready to roll out the announcement on that one yet, but we're very close. And it's time for us to add another position into the IT department, as we have over the last six months, moved everything possible to online services, telephone services, or our app services, our online, you know, you can always have your app on the phone. We think that it's time to add a position to that department so that one of the current positions in the department can be moved to nothing but a system specialized security person. This was something that council gave us direction on for having IT and cybersecurity a while back. We had looked for six months, eight months, at doing third-party outside IT security, but after what we experienced on Cyber Day here, we realized our best resources are actually in-house. So there is a request, and this is funding for half of a year for $50,000. I don't think we'll be posting jobs during the time of COVID while we're on limited public access, so that may be a while. Any, any funding not used from any of the requests here, by the way, will do revert back to the general fund and will be rolled back to fund balance at the end of the year. But the total request for IT is $50,000. Voter registration and elections, as you all know, we had a demonstration a while back before the primaries, we have new machines. We've had them machines almost a calendar year. The machines, maintenance on the equipment was good for up to one calendar year, and this $5,000 increase request is for, to get us until June 30th of next year. This does not have any impact on this current year, but it will get us through January through June of next year. And the total request for the voter registration and elections is $5,000. For soil and water conservation, dam insurance apparently across the state has increased because you have the enormous amount of rainfall that we've had this year, and the co-op extension service has an increase as the services that the co-op does provide to the county are vital to our farmers and our conservation district. The total request for soil and water conservation district is $1,300. Administrator, the total request of 585,176, I think blew a couple of people's minds, and I'm sorry that I didn't put that in there clearly earlier on the, on the summary sheet you all had before. It is not a raise request for me in any way, shape, or form. It is, however, a pay increase for employees, as we discussed, for the merit system, the accountabilities, the lower turnover, the pulling the bottom up, the employee retention. So last year, council approved the 4% increase on the condition that we would put in an evaluation system, which we have. Every single department head has successfully turned in evaluations on every staff member in every department, and these are graded increases for staff members who did extremely well needing no improvement, they get the 1,500 up front. Staff members who graded well but could use minor improvement, get their initial raise, but then they get six months to get up to the $1,500 based on what their improvement stage, status was. I want to go over the importance of us funding ourselves. Okone County invests in so much. We invest in our name, our image, our chairs, our carpets, but we've yet to invest in our people in a way that we've been able to maintain them without, I think, a 16% turnover three years ago and a 13% last year. We have to be able to keep our good employees. Mr. Kane and I had a good conversation on the phone earlier today, because we do have employees that, that get lured away. So I brought the wage and salary report from the Association of Counties. So we start looking through it, and we're in population group two, or three, I'm sorry, which is 50 to 100,000. If I name off the counties, none of them are near us. We don't lose our employees to counties or agencies that are within our population range and within our general budget range. Where we do lose our employees, as odd as it is, and as unfair to us as it is, is to Anderson County, and they're in the population group right above us, but they're our neighboring county. We lose them to Pickens County. They're in a population category above us, but they still pay more than we do for base level and for skilled trades. So for instance, when someone comes in, and I'm just going to pick a department off the top of my head, sheriff, he's here and can defend this. When an employee comes in, we offer them a pretty attractive salary, we get them trained, we provide this, we provide that. Well, once they're trained and certified, they're very attractive to the counties around us because the training and the certification is the hard part. Once they know that someone's passed the background check, gone to the law enforcement training, gone to police academy, gotten in uniform, has driven a car for six months without being in terrible trouble, they're very attractive to the counties around us who have more money than we do, that, that they keep that standard going for us. Subsequently, say our road department, we hire a driver, we give them county equipment to practice on, we give county roads to build on. We, we train this group of people, and then they're very attractive either to business or industry or local government around us. So this incentive here, and it has to be based on merit and evaluation, this is part of how we will retain employees to the future. We have some employees that are just grossly underpaid, period, for what they do. We have some employees that are paid adequately for what they do, but because they've been doing it for so long, their experience is very attractive to industry and governments around us, so we want to retain them as well. And then we have very specialized employees. We have employees that do one thing, and they do it so well that you wouldn't even want to ask them to do anything else. Like IT, they do IT well. They do it really, really, really well. Our IT staff, they're pretty flexible and can do a lot of other things, but you don't want them to. You actually want to focus on IT, IT security, cybersecurity, cyber insurance, fraud. So the 585,176 is on behalf of the employees of the county and, and not for me. The reason we put it in one department is so that I wouldn't have to explain all of the raises in $10,000 increments per department, because we have 56 departments, as you know. Any questions on the raises, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I need to make sure I understand. So, so if I'm doing a fantastic job, I get the $1,500 whenever that's awarded.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I need some improvement, then I've got a certain period of time.
You do.
To improve, and if I don't improve, I don't.
Don't get it.
I don't get it.
Correct.
If I do improve, based on, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the reason we wanted to do that, this is the first year in five years we've actually done turn-in evaluations, face-to-face, how am I doing, where am I failing, where do I need improvement? A few years ago, we had, I think, five years ago, six years ago, we had an evaluation method, and it was done in percentages. They're 80% adequate at this, they're 90% adequate at that. It was so difficult for some depart, it was a five-page document. It was difficult for department heads because, say, Kyle at the road department, he's got 36 people that work for him. It, it would take him hours to do all of that, and these are long forms. So basically, we say, do they do their job adequately and efficiently? Are they on time and have a good attitude? Are they a good team player? I mean, it's literally 10 questions. Because basically, the job itself is what we train them to do. I can't say that, let alone that can't work a calculator if I never gave her one. We give them the tools, we make sure that we spend the time training, and the rest of them is based on service. It's service. What we provide in Okone County is service. Can't buy a pen from us, can't buy water from us. We're a monopoly, and we provide service, and that's where I think the room for improvement. Not everybody knows how to answer the phone to a person who is extremely angry with you because you're the fourth person they talk to. So that service is, okay, I know what the council clerk does, so when I get a call, hey, I need to do this or this or that, I'm like, oh, hang on, you don't need to talk to this person, you need to talk to. to this person you need to talk to. But what happened in the past was we weren't even trained in what other offices did. So by the time Katie answered the phone, if somebody had already talked to three departments before her, he was mad before she ever said hello. Now we have this, okay, if they need A, B, C, or D, ask this question. Auditor and assessor, those two get confused by the public all the time. This is one of those things, service, service, especially during this time. Yes, time of frustration is the time of uncertainty. So that's one of the things we focused on a lot, is just the customer service side. And since we can't say, okay, you did bad, and we're not going to have any incentive for improvement, that's where the, hey, if you can improve in six months, you get a chance to redeem some of that money back. Again, that, are we done with that one?
No.
Am I talking too fast?
Mm-hmm.
So again, the administrator request, and that's for county departments. At fifteen hundred dollars max per employee, and of course, it goes back down to that scale again, is five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars. The next department is for solid waste. Both of these are capital expenditure requests. We discussed these early in April when I first brought you the budget requests for this year, and of course, we're bringing these two back because they have increased in priority. The transfer station repairs, there's a significant crack that goes down the center line of the transfer station. This is where all of the municipalities and commercial businesses and all of our waste from the convenience center comes in, where we load it, the waste, those regular household wastes, not C and D, into a transfer station, then it's loaded onto eighteen-wheelers before it's taken home to Homer, Georgia. There's a crack in the floor at the transfer station. Because of the amount of tons that the transfer station holds at any given time, and we're permitted up to forty-five thousand tons per year, an average of five hundred tons per day, the concrete and the P S I on that concrete has to be very specialized. It seems like a lot of money just to lay a concrete foundation. It's just the cost of doing business. This was originally put in the April budget, and of course, we, we thought it was an emergency then, but thank goodness, we've had some luck over the summer. But as soon as we can, that is going to be a prioritized request from council. And the compactors, this is one of those compactors that we use at the main convenience centers. These are used for regular household waste, so when you go to the convenience center, you know it squishes your garbage. Because if it didn't squish the garbage, we would be bringing in three-ton containers, not ten-ton containers. The compactors that we're replacing all are more than twelve years old and have reached pretty much their lifespan. The total request for solid waste is one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. And again, both of those are capital and none of which are operational. Moving on to Oconee Regional Airport, the parking lot, I don't know the last time any of you have been out there, is too small, period. With the amount of, of general aviation traffic we're getting, even during the times of COVID, with the long-term parking we have, and the fact that we had to move the parking space back some from the apron area at the request of the F A A for increased safety, we need a new parking area. So a couple of years ago, we expanded it about the width of this room, two cars deep across from where you pull in on the backside of the airport, and gravelled it. Well, that parking lot is gravel, and it's not working out. We need to pave it. So the thirty thousand request is to pave the rear parking lot where it is currently gravel and expand onto the other side so that we do not have cars parking where the building A one T hangers are. Because if somebody happens to leave a car there during hours, we are not open, and aircraft coming out of a hangar or coming back into a hangar, did not see that there was a car parked in the grass, that could be a dangerous moment for us. And the other one is for airport attendant. This is only the third position requested in this year's budget and the final one. First two, obviously, again, were for communications and for dispatch for the sheriff's office. We have at the airport increased business on a daily basis. We are no longer a hobby airport. As you all know, we have become a hub of upstate business. We are looking at reaching another record in jet A sales again this year, and will very likely be coming back to you to request increased funding, which means increased revenue for jet A fuel, as the four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars we estimated for this year is already looking like it's not, not going to be enough. We are very happy at the expansion of the airport, but as the airport continues to grow in busyness and in demands from our customers, we need another airport attendant to be out there because safety is our first priority. And we generally don't fuel the jet unless we've got two people. As many jets as are out there, I think we're out there Thursday, Wednesday afternoon or Thursday, I think we had six come in in an hour and a half. This means that an airport of five people, if you've got six come in in an hour and a half, you've got one person to answer the phone, one to operate a tug, and one to make sure that airfield is clean and, and visible and open at all times. The request for the airport attendant is above normal starting, but for us to recruit someone with the experience that we're looking for, it's only fifteen hundred above starting. I do want to say that. But that increase you see there, because previously, I think we'd asked for forty-six something, this is two thousand more than what we asked for in April. So the total for the airport is seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars. The register of deeds, again, the equipment maintenance, this is just simply equipment that we use in the office. An increase for COT system, which is our software upgrading loading systems. We have some new equipment down there we're working on right now that you guys approved in last year's budget that we just got in. And Mr. Hart, I think you'll be pleased to know, we have continued weekly to work on the Platte Mortgage Scanning. They're doing an average of fourteen hundred a week right now. The increase for the register of deeds total is two thousand dollars. And finally, the county attorney's department. This is for a salary correction and for an increase in the professional, is that for Westlaw? That's what I told Mr. Kane earlier.
I did have an increase in Westlaw, wasn't this much? I'm not sure where the.
The salary correction.
Okay, from the raise with the.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes.
It wasn't it?
Yes, so that's the primary. I think that's twenty-six something. So the Westlaw increase is just a portion of this total increase. We just combined the two of them for a departmental total. The total increase for that one is thirty thousand, five hundred. This brings our total amendment request for the general fund of Oconee County Government to two million, four hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Ms. Brock.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned the general fund unrestricted balance.
Yes.
What is our estimate? I know we haven't had an audit yet, but what is the estimate for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-year increase in the unrestricted general fund balance?
One point two.
Hmm, I'd say anywhere from eight to one point two. It's, we, we've got it down to a narrow range, somewhere between about nine hundred thousand and one point two million.
Super.
Thank you. And I do anticipate our collections for this coming year. Everyone is not talking about the elephant in the room, but I feel like it's only fair to say it out loud. I think we all have a looming feeling that our economic outlook may not be as sunny in coming months, and that may be true. It may very well be true. And obviously, if that is true, we will do everything that we have to do in a responsible manner to still provide every single service that we can to the citizens of the county while maintaining as much of fiscal responsibility as we can. Some of the costs that you're looking here in front of you, some of these are absolute just fixed costs. It's just the cost of doing what we do. In order for us to do what we do, it, we have to be able to fund that. You all know, and I'm sure some of you have gotten personal phone calls over some of the equipment purchases that we've made. We, the road department is operating now, you know, as we start increasing the efficiencies, we starting decreasing the, the need for more people to do more things. So if we have a piece of equipment that can operate certain, like the new motor grader, it does things that we can't do as people, or if we can do as people, it takes three of us to do it. So now I've got two guys that can do something else while we've got one guy doing this. As we begin to make the balance between our efficiencies and our operations, I think we'll see a leveling off. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus from the past, and I'm not in any way intentionally trying to do that, but we're still working on a cleanup program. I want you all to know that this, we're not going to consistently have, oh, we got to fix this, or we got to fix that. But every year, we're going to have to make commitments to continue to do the things that you're doing. Y'all implemented that capital vehicle replacement fund last year. This has been asked for for four years before that or three years before that, but it was never funded. You fixed a problem in one year, and that solution will continue to grow over year after year after year. Same thing with some of the items that you're seeing here, and Mr. Kane and Mr. Davis, Mr. Elliott, and Wayne especially with the, with the salaries. We have not adequately paid our employees to do the jobs that we're asking of them. We created a culture of division by choosing who to pay and how much. The across-the-board, the fairness, the making it based on merit, the ability to come back and get what you couldn't get because of a lack of service or a lack of training or whatever. That gives this community, this team, a, a buy-in from our staff. That decreases our turnover. It changes our insurance. It changes attitudes. You see people smiling. Our retention is so much better. I mean, if we invest in ourselves, it will pay off.
Mr. Recan, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Elliott, second by Mr. Kane. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, first thing, just to make it clear, I think council knows, but for the public's benefit, when I was referring to the raise, the raise portion in the county attorney's line item was from the year prior. And since we just did, continued over the prior years appropriations, it just wasn't reflected. So y'all were kind enough to grant me an extension recently to my contract, but there was no raise as a part of that.
Correct. That's why that was written as a correction.
No, I just want to make sure that was correct. The other part that I wanted to make sure we got straight or discussed was the budget proviso number three. This is highlighted, I sent you all an email about this yesterday, but since it was a holiday, I'm not sure everybody got a copy of it or discussed it. So this highlighted portion speaks to advertising with the Journal. As y'all recall, the motion was made and carried during the initial budget version, not advertise with the bud, with the Journal affiliated entities unless legally required to do so. I want to say it's a month and a half ago, we had some discussions about entering into certain contracts with the Journal for advertising. I, I recall one of them being pet adoption advertising, another one being for the tax sale. The administrator could probably speak to the other ones, but I was of the mind that, that time, and I still am of the mind, that you couldn't do that unless we had an amendment to the ordinance because the initial motion was made as part of the budget ordinance. So that is why that's here. If you look at the page right before that, in section eighteen, we have as part of almost every ordinance, a statement that all other orders, resolutions, ordinances of the county that are inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed, revoked, rescinded. So because that's in there, the effect of that on the prior motion would be vague. So however you all want to address the issue with the Journal, I think it needs to be spelled out clearly because there was a notion of discussing or entering into additional contracts that weren't legally required. I put this language in there to open that door for discussion. Obviously, you could say, I want to move to amend and delete this and continue the same prohibition. You could reword it. If you don't make a motion to amend, then this language will stay in there. I'm glad to answer any questions about that, but that was the reasoning for it.
May I piggyback off of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Based on the same discussion we had regarding the previous contracts, any and all advertising done specifically with the Journal, of course, as a matter of policy in-house, would be brought for council approval besides any contracts that would be sent out. Just want to make that sure because since we'd had that discussion before.
So let, explain that, please. I mean, so there's, there's some legal requirements that we advertise. But this would be outside of the legal requirements.
Correct.
So outside of legal requirements, it would take, you would come to us before. So if, if we want to say Merry Christmas to the Journal, we've got to approve it.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a comment. On this advertisement, only you want, you want pets advertised.
That was for the Humane Society?
I understand, I understand.
I was just trying to save the record.
But the whole thing is, had you rather the Journal be advertising ten thousand, or you'd rather the whole upper state at thirty-four thousand have these pets, or have them to know that there's going to be an apple festival? You want thirty-four thousand people throughout the upper state to know about it, or do you want ten thousand in the county? I say, go with the, the biggest bang and get it out to the other people that you want to draw into this area from the upper state. I mean, we, we're not tied to this one advertisement when we can do this. And on top of that, their, they, they, their paper, they put out five out of seven days. So in the Anderson Independent, I gave Mr. Root the number, I think it was thirty-six thousand, is that right? Or thirty-four, which was?
And, and did you get my email yesterday?
I got an email. I don't pay that much attention to it.
Okay, well, part of, part of that, the thirty-six thousand in the distribution number that you gave me, I followed up on that. Their, Anderson's distribution in the county is not to individuals. They confirmed that they have about a thousand count distribution on a Sunday, the biggest day, and it's just to gas stations and supermarkets and things of that nature. So they did confirm that, but I didn't have any dispute that for, I guess it's for Pickens and Anderson for all the counties.
No, sir, that sheet of paper I gave you, it had the, the total upper, upstate, it was either thirty-four thousand or thirty-six thousand, and on Sunday it went up to, I think it was forty-six thousand.
Right. What I was saying is for Oconee County, it's a thousand. That was the confirmation.
But what I'm saying is, if you want to help people to come here for the apple festival, you want ten thousand people to know about it, or you want forty-six thousand on Sunday to know about it from the whole upper state?
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I don't have a, that's a policy issue. Y'all decided that. I was just saying for the legal requirement, that was the issue I was speaking to, was the one thousand.
Usually the advertisement, the ATX funding that's provided to them, that advertisement has to be done outside of a certain parameter. So I have seen in Greenville and Anderson and other papers, even in Georgia, where certain festivals have been advertised in. So, and I'm, I'm all for, you know, looking at that, but I think for the majority of what we're trying to get, public awareness, things like that.
Yes.
And it's not an amendment, but it's a statement that there needs to be a description of what we're doing from, from the public cause, from the legal cause, to the public awareness that we, that we incur. And because that is important locally to reach out to, to those. So regardless of the, the feelings on there, it is important to get that message out locally. And so that's just my statement on there.
Mr. Chairman, what if you happen to be a person that only reads the newspaper on Sundays or Mondays? Where are you going to get your information?
Well, we, and we do, you know, for what we're doing on the web and what we're doing out there, we're trying to get multiple things. And you'll actually see, we'll actually be discussing this, I'll put it on the agenda for September the fifteenth, Ms. Brock, I believe that's correct, to talk about.
Yes.
Com- communication strategies for our citizens. And it's also talking a little bit on, on the police side of things, on their, how they're getting information out and everything like that. So we will have a broader range of communication, so I do challenge each council member to think about that, just like what you're talking about there. What can we do to get our message out in multitude of ways? Because not everybody reads the newspaper, not everybody has, has internet. So there's a multitude of ways that we're going to do. So I do want everybody to sit down and just think about that. Where do you, talk to people? Where do you get your information from? How do you get your news? What do you listen to? How can we do a better job as, as a county in getting our information out? Especially during times of turmoil, and, and me, me and Mr. Kane battled that during the tornado, trying to make sure the information out where it's, where it's coming from, and, and it was difficult. So I do want this council to take this time, and I don't want to, you know, sit up here all night, but, but I do want this council to sit here for this week before the fifteenth, bring some stuff back and think about how we can communicate the county's message in the best way possible out there in multitude of ways to make sure our citizens are aware of what's going on. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The problem I have with advertising, first off, in the past, I get people calling me up, chewing me out. Why are you running a full-page ad on Happy Easter? I say, I got no idea. I don't. I say, I got no idea, I don't do the advertising. The other thing is, what happens here in the council chambers, we got a reporter. I'm here, I know what went on. And what's written in the newspaper seems to be entirely different. You know, what's, what's going on here? So then I, then we talk about, we found out some people that worked for the journal. And they say, well, it's all, it's, it's heavily censored. That poor girl up here, in the audience, she writing what? She gets, she gets her wings clipped on a regular basis. Now, you want to call it a newspaper is one thing. In Central America, we have La Nationale, that's the newspaper from Nicaragua, we all get it, we enjoy it. It's run by Daniel Ortega, he's a liar, murderer, thief, at least he admits it. This is, so if you're going to say we're going to advertise in a public forum. You know, y'all, you know there's a new news thing starting on television now. It's on sixty-two, I think it is, they've been advertising. We're going to just put the news out there as it is unbiased and that's what the news should be. And yet, that lady, whatever her name is, I can't remember, she, she's, she's here, she hears what went on at council, good, bad or indifferent. And then the next, the next day, you get people calling me up, hey, I was in the audience too and that ain't what happened. What's going on here? I just, those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Uh, and I appreciate your time.
Like I said, I want, want everybody to think through that and talk to people and bring that back on the fifteenth and we'll have an open discussion about it. Reach out to Ms. Brock or Mr. Root about your concerns and, and address those as we move forward. Because, and, and the word advertisement is very, very broad because we advertise with multiple entities. And sometimes legal gets thrown into there and everything like that. So I just want, you know, sometimes advertisement, I, I, I don't think there should be a full-page saying Happy Easter or Merry Christmas or anything like that. I, I agree with you, it needs to be public awareness, it needs to be our focus, period, and we need to do, make sure people know what's going on. So, all right. So motion in a second, just so we, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion to adjourn.